All right. Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Gilde. I'm coming to you from the Inside Lowell Studios. This Inside Lowell podcast is coming to you from the WellPoint Studios. WellPoint, the only health plan offering healthcare benefits exclusively to Massachusetts GIC members. At WellPoint, your whole health is their whole point. This is a special podcast, not typically what I do. I'm here with my guest, Corey Robinson, Counselor Corey Robinson, who, if you're watching this, you probably know had some legal issues back in, I'd say, starting in November of 2023. We're going to get deep into that. But today is Corey's opportunity to sort of give his side of the story, which he's been promising for a long time. I was approached and asked, you know, since I write a blog here at Inside Lowell, whether I would be interesting in sitting down and having a conversation. And I was told that I can ask pretty much whatever I want, whatever the public would want to know. So that was interesting enough to me to get me in the door. So Corey, how you doing?
I'm doing well. Thank you for sitting down, Ryan.
Yeah, not a problem. Thank you for being here. And I want to thank Teddy and Inside Lowell for giving us this format here that we can have this conversation. Before we get into, you know, the charges and everything else, I want to talk about why you can talk now and why you couldn't talk for about 13, 14 months. So just to recap, round about November 17th of 2023, a story breaks that you had been arrested for something arising out of an incident in Drakett on November 15th of 2023. And that begins a criminal case that was pending in the Lowell District Court, correct?
Correct.
All right. And so while that case was pending, it's my understanding that on the advice of counsel, you were told not to talk about the details of that case.
Correct.
Okay. So I believe it was about December, mid-December of 2024, that case ultimately ended, right?
Correct.
And how did it end?
Dismissal.
All right. So the Commonwealth decided that they were not going to move further on the case. Was it scheduled for trial?
Actually, it was trial, and it was dismissed the day of the trial.
Okay. So would it be fair to say that the Commonwealth decided they didn't have enough evidence to move forward on that case? Were you given any reason, or you just show up to court and they say it's dismissed?
They were arguing kind of some of the technical aspects of it at the time. My attorney, the District Attorney's Office, and they were in conversations. And ultimately, they decided to move for dismissal on it.
Okay. So as of that date, you are now free to say all the things that you wanted to say or couldn't say while that case was working its way through the court system? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
All right. So while it's going through the court system, more importantly, I think, is, or more interestingly, it's also in the court of public opinion, all right? And again, if you're watching this podcast, you've probably already formed an opinion as to what happened. You based it on media reports, or if you've seen a copy of the police report. So, you know, I think the only way to have this conversation, as I was thinking about this, is for me to just sort of go over what the public had, you know, what the media had, what podcasters had, what the sitting US Congresswoman had, what your fellow counselors had, when they were offering their opinions, you know, mostly back in the fall and winter of 2023, early '24, okay?
Yep.
So if you go with what's in the police report, you're involved in a relationship with a woman living in Drakett, correct? Okay. And on November 15th of 2023, about 5:30, 6 o'clock at night, she's on a telephone call with her lawyer, right?
Yes.
All right. During that phone call, you apparently show up at her home, and that some sort of an argument or altercation happens, correct?
Correct.
All right. I'm just, I'm not asking you to agree or disagree.
Yeah, you're just going through the overall.
Right, exactly. Now, according to the police report, there were four witnesses to this altercation. Witness number one says that he sees your car/truck pull up, and then he leaves. He doesn't see anything that happens after that, but he puts you at the place of this altercation, okay? Witness number two says that she's cooking dinner in her apartment or condo. She hears a heated argument. She saw a woman running in fear with you following. She heard the woman yell, "Go away." She heard her scream for help. She heard you say, "I can't breathe," repeatedly. That's witness two. Witness three is on his deck grilling. He heard a woman yelling, "You hit me." He heard her yell, "You're going to jail. You beat me up." And then he started running towards her apartment, and he called the police, asking for a welfare check, apparently. Witness number four is that lawyer that the woman was on the phone with. He says that while he's on the phone with the woman, who I believe is his client, he heard her say that Corey is here. He heard some commotion and something breaking. He heard her say, "Why did you just hit me in the head with?" And then it's sort of inaudible as to what happened after the word "with." And then he said he heard her say, "He's strangling me." Those are basically what people heard. And then the police arrive, again, this is Drakett police. They show up at the scene. You're not there. They found a female with a broken beer bottle near her, a puddle on the ground next to the broken beer bottle, abrasions and scratches to her neck, bruising on her neck, that she was pulling clumps of hair from her head. She was pulling leaves from her hair. And then after questioning, they asked her, "Did Corey pull your hair?" And she nodded yes in the affirmative and whispered yes. And the police noted that they had been there five times in the past year. So that's what everyone was sort of, that's the evidence that people had to go on in the court of public opinion. Obviously, your hands were tied. You couldn't give your side of it until now. So however you want to address it, point by point, or just in general, now's your chance. What do you say?
So thank you. First, I'd like to thank all of our, I have to say, all the people that allowed the judicial system to do what it does. People that allowed time to work through what these initial allegations and reports were, and provided support through all this, I mean, realistically. A big portion of this was completely incorrect. The police report, again, it wasn't, it's reported, "I was in the house, chased her out of the house," all these things. Wasn't the case at all. This was someone that I deeply cared about, and deeply care about. This is someone that I was a support for for many years. This was someone that was facing their own set of challenges. The night that this occurred, this person had been pretty much released from getting some help. We had been in constant conversation the entire time over the phone. Was asked, "Come see me before you go to an event that I had to attend that night." I go to the house, ring the bell, no one's there. I'm outside. This person comes walking up the street, holding a beer in her hand, or two beers, a couple beers, on the phone. So I says, "You know, what are you doing? You just got released. You're drinking all these things." Tap the beer, it falls out of her hand, immediately goes into crisis. Ah, flipping out, screaming and yelling, grabs my phone, runs. I'm running after her, saying, "Give me my phone. I'm leaving. Give me my phone." She finally stops, "Give me my phone." That's when I stopped and was saying, "I can't breathe. I'm out of here. Get in my car. I leave."
Just so I can't breathe, sort of like an emotional thing, not a physical panic attack type of thing?
Yeah, it was just like, it was ridiculous, you know? I was disappointed and hurt to see the person that I thought was doing well in a program come out and be drinking on whatever other medication was, you know, at the time. That's pretty much what happened. I left. I attended. I get a phone call later on that night from Drakett Police, saying, "Turn myself in." That they had a warrant or something to arrest me for a domestic incident. And I told them, "I have no idea what you're talking about. We had an argument, and that was it. I left." So I turned myself in. I was never arrested. Turned myself in the following morning with an attorney at the courthouse, tried to get this sorted out. I'm at the courthouse, we're waiting around, go in front of the judge for arraignment. So now I go in front of the judge. I'm told that I had a similar incident from 10 years previously, which I've never had any allegations or any similar incident occur in my life. I tell my attorney at the time, "That's not me. It's not true." It fell on deaf ears for the most part when it was repeated to the judge. Next thing I know, they said it's a dangerousness hearing. We go through that process. It's like 4:00 PM. They tell me that because it's so late in the day, probation, I'd left for the day. I had to go to Barica House of Correction and come back in the morning and get an ankle monitor and bracelet because of, you know, dangerousness or whatever. So I go through all that. I get the ankle bracelet. I'm beside myself, mind you. Like, for one, I know I didn't touch this woman. I know she was in crisis at the time, and on, you know, the alcohol and whatever else. I'm still trying to figure out at that point what is going on, and then the dangerousness hearing, and I did this before. And so I get home, I hire an attorney, a separate attorney. We flush out that, so I guess it was explained to me from my attorney. The process is when you appear to court for an arraignment, probation department prepares your file, submits it to the judge. You go to arraignment in front of the judge. The judge looks at your file, and that's where they begin the, you know, considerations. My attorney finally flushed out that that person with the same name that was in my file that the judge looked at, that was not me.
So if you're listening at home, you can go on masscourts.org, and you can look up people. I don't know if I have special access because of a lawyer or whatever, but there's a portion of it open to the public. I'm not sure if criminal records are on there or not. I suspect maybe not. But you can look up a last name and a first name. And if you were to look up Corey Robinson, there'll be a bunch of Corey Robinsons, but not all of them have the same middle name. Was it one of those? I think there's a, I don't want to give his name, but there's another Corey Robinson out there who has other stuff. So that, are you saying that led to some confusion?
So what happened is, now the judge sees in my file someone with the same name, different middle initial, with a similar situation here. And I think that person might have been convicted of it, or I'm not sure. I don't remember what his result was. But I'm explaining to my lawyer, "This was not me." So we finally figure out, "It's not you." So then he clears that up with the courts. Meanwhile, I mean, I had already gone through the dangerousness hearing. I had already been fitted with an ankle monitor and bracelet. So it's like, it's kind of a little bit late for that.
Do you think it would have been possible that you still end up getting fitted with the ankle bracelet, even if the court had not made that mistake? In other words, just based on the charges alone, that they could have done that? Or is it your understanding that because that wrong Corey Robinson was part of your file, that's why you ended up with the ankle bracelet?
I mean, I'm not familiar with the way the courts work, but I feel like, I don't think I deserved an ankle bracelet. I was charged with, or alleged with, two misdemeanor offenses. Dangerous, how, I don't have a dangerous history. I don't have any of that kind of stuff, ever. So I don't understand what triggered the dangerous hearing, where nobody was in fear of their life or a threat. And through the police report, I mean, the alleged victim never said that I did these things to her, for one. For two, not one witness ever said they saw me lay a finger on this woman. The attorney that was on the phone, his story changed and fluctuated. I was never charged with hitting her in the head with anything, which he claimed when he called allegedly. I didn't know early on a lot of the stuff that got flushed out through the process of this. All I know is that when this did occur, it occurred on, I believe, a Wednesday or a Thursday. When I got home Friday, I texted, you know, because I knew, "This is a mess. Like, I need to get this sorted out." I texted my colleagues on the council that Sunday night, asking them pretty much, "Stand by. Be patient. I understand this is a horrible situation. I'm telling you, I did not do this. I don't condone domestic violence or any kind of violence like that in any way, shape, or form. I mean, please, be vigilant. Pay attention to this. All I'm asking, respectfully, allow the judicial process to play out and make an informed decision on what the next steps will be."
But before we get to the council and the decisions that they made, right? Again, what the council was basing it on was based, I assume, in large part with what was in the press and what was in the police report itself.
Well, no, see, and that's what I'm saying. So this was, first of all, the police report, this was a domestic violence incident. The police report wasn't widely available. It's illegal to be sharing that information.
Sure, but things seep out.
Well, and again, that's another problem.
Another issue, right, yeah.
But, so this happened on the Thursday. That Sunday, that's when I was still trying to process it. I couldn't speak on it. I couldn't get into the, I was still trying to figure out even what was going on. Then that started all the mess. That following Monday, I got no response from the council. Step aside, step aside, all that, and the media took off at that point. So as far as the courts and what they would have done without that error in my file, I can't answer for that. But I can't answer to, I've never had those kind of allegations or charges or anything remotely close to that against me in my life. So it kind of leads me to believe that that might have been a problem along the lines that, you know, what would trigger a dangerousness hearing in that situation, especially where it's two misdemeanors and nobody saying that I ever laid a finger on this woman outside of that police report that was all over the place?
Couple other, I've read the police report. I hear what you're saying in terms of, "It's all over the place. There are inconsistencies. There's some really weird things in the report." But nevertheless...
One of the witnesses that you mentioned in the police report that said he was on his backyard grilling or whatever, that where he said in the police report, "He is," or "He lives," is probably 300, 400 yards away, like from where she was staying. So it's like, there's, you know, there was no way for that gentleman to even, ever. And he knew nor I or her.
The thing that I think the public would want to know is that you gave your events of what happened that night, where you show up, the limited altercation that you described, and then you leaving, right? And then we went through what, you know, the people said that they heard. Again, I would agree with, the police report doesn't have any eyewitnesses to this. So everything is basically circumstantial evidence, but it's evidence nevertheless in a court of law. What I think what led to some of the actions of your fellow counselors, the Congresswoman, press, et cetera, is that it wasn't just people saying, it was some of the physical evidence that was there. So for example, the scratches on her neck, the bruising on her neck, the clumps of hair, and her nodding to the police officer and whispering "yes" when they said, "Did Corey do this?" or whatever. I think if you put all those things together, I can understand more where some people were coming from. In a criminal court, you don't have to provide explanations for everything, right? Do you have some explanation for scratches or anything, any of the stuff that I just ticked off?
I have no explanation on why she had scratches or the hairpiece stuff that they were talking about. What I do know is that I saw the pictures that the Lowell Sun somehow put out there. If I was allegedly, first of all, even when the attorney on the phone saying, "He's hearing her say he's choking me," or "Strang-" whatever the verbiage was, that was something even my attorney picked up, is, "So if I'm choking somebody, and they're still talking on the phone routinely, regularly, how is that possible? If you're being choked and you're having a conversation on the phone, it doesn't choking involve, you know, restricting somebody?" So that was one point. Another point was choking somebody, the marks the Lowell Sun released, there was marks down by like the collarbone area, which is not choking somebody. Like, it's not, there was, I never laid a hand on this woman. The brush that they said that her hair was coming out, we found out in the court that she had lost her keys. And when she was sitting there drinking, talking to the police officer, taking the report, that brush, she went down to the neighbor's house and was using the neighbor's brush to brush her hair.
Yeah, that's in the report, yeah.
In crisis. Now, mind you, in crisis, drinking while they're interviewing her. So I mean, there was a million things. I can't comment what marks came from. I have no idea. She had just come out from a place that day, and that was the first I had seen her in 10 days, 12 days. So I don't know what was going on with her hair or any marks that she might have had. And again, that was like a half hour of the police sitting there, pressing this woman that was drinking while they interviewed her again. And in the middle of crisis, just saying, "Oh, we think she looks sober. We think everything's fine, and did Corey do it?" Repeatedly, "Did Corey do this? Did Corey do this? Corey do this? Corey do this?" So it was, I don't understand that part of it. I wasn't there.
Okay. So speaking of the woman and what she says happened, right? So one account is in the police report. I don't, I don't remember exactly when it was, but it was after everyone had already called for you to step aside and everything else. It was right around that time, though. A statement came out from her saying that you did not do the things that the police were alleging that you had done, correct? Do you recall that? Initially, it came out through Jack Mitchell in a blog post, and then it came out through a well-known lawyer here in the city. Little bit more of a formal statement, repeating basically the same thing. How did that, do you know anything about how that came about in terms of how she would have reached that? Did she just reach out to Jack? Do you know? I mean, obviously, you had an order for no contact.
Yeah, I had no contact. Like, I saw that too when it came out. And another thing I was told from my attorney was that she had been in contact with the DA's office, whoever from the DA's office, and explained that this was not true. The attorney that made the call that was representing her was the one that kept contesting, saying it was true. And as far as her statement went, when I saw that, like, I would ask my attorney, "Well, what's going on?" I mean, she's finally communicating to people. Like, her side of the story, what's in, again, her attorney at the time was saying that wasn't true and all of these other things. So the case goes on. She releases that statement. Public courts are still up in arms and all this. And to me, some of the biggest disappointment of all of it was, here's a woman that's an alleged victim in a domestic violence situation. There was no regard for her at all in any way, shape, or form. So like, the Lowell Sun, they're printing pictures of an alleged domestic violence victim. The Lowell Suns releasing her name. They're releasing her information. There was no concern for her well-being through any of this. It was almost like a mob mentality and after me. That's ridiculous. I think that's very, how are women supposed to come forward and discuss any kind of alleged domestic violence situation if they're going to be outed by a local media outlet in an attempt to, what, sell papers? And where was the advocacy from the domestic groups for this woman's safety and protection and privacy to be covered? I mean, that was disheartening to me because, again, as I said, I was one of her only supports for years. And I had helped her get into multiple different programs through the resources we have in the community. And when I saw the way that some of the media outlets and some of the people in the public were just happy to like use her as a pawn in their own, whatever, chasing after me, all of this was, it was definitely, some of the hardest things I've ever had to do was bite my tongue and not be able to speak up and explain any of this.
That's why we're here today. So first of all, going back to a point that you made. Yes, she actually, in one of her statements, she herself noted that she was upset with the way the Lowell Sun had given up her address and some personal details and stuff like that, so.
She actually, from what I gather, she actually tried to file a harassment order against the Lowell Sun as well.
I wanted to turn for a moment, because again, as this is going on, I'm trying to be the voice of Joe Public as I sit behind this desk today. And I'm trying to think of some of the, what I had heard in conversations and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So you mentioned your relationship with this woman going back, you know, years. You were someone that was trying to help her out and everything else. And I think everybody either has these problems personally, knows someone with these problems. But with that comes a certain amount of chaos, as you know, right?
Yes.
You now are not just Corey Robinson from the Parks Department. You are Corey Robinson, elected official. You've got a very high profile. You know, do you think that maybe you should have gotten away sooner before something like this happened? And I ask that because, you know, the police report says that it's been multiple times that they had been there over the past year. So obviously, well, I don't know obviously, but perhaps some things had been happening, and it was a matter of time before something like this happened.
So that's, I think that's a fair question. And well, let me explain. They had been there multiple times, but more so for well-being checks. Because again, this person would go into crisis. I wasn't even there. I'd be on the phone, trying to be a support, and I'd have to call for a well-being check because I was unable to physically be there at the time, you know? I was, whether I was working or doing whatever. So, and no, I don't think I should have gotten away. Because I'm the type of person that, in my personal life especially, if I care about somebody, you can't just turn your back when they need you. And this person was desperately in need of a support system and kind of someone to help try to at least steer them in the direction to get the help that they needed for whatever they were challenged with. And so I don't regret ever trying to do that for somebody that I loved and cared about at all, period.
Even with everything that's happened to you personally, you would still do the same thing again?
I would do the same thing as far as being a support system for somebody that I care about, yes, absolutely. Because, I mean, anybody that has experience dealing with somebody that has any of these kind of challenges, if they know, if they've seen somebody that they care about go into crisis, it's the scariest thing to ever have to watch. And at that point in time, that person is not in the right frame of mind. To see somebody that you know very well, whole personality change as a result of whatever it may be is going on, that's not something you just walk away from, most people at least. I couldn't do that to a brother, a loved one, you know, a friend that cared about. I just, I couldn't turn my back, especially where, in that elected official role, I'm pretty familiar with some of the resources available in the community. So it kind of worked hand in hand. I think as an elected official, yes, I might not be Corey Robinson from the Parks or whatever that may be. But at the same time, even with all this going on in my personal life, it was never a distraction from the job that I was elected to do.
So that's a good segue, and I don't mean to cut you off, but it's definitely something that I wanted to touch on. And it's something that Teddy brought up when you were in here in July of last year, when basically you promised something along the lines of this interview. But I believe the topic of conversation was something along the lines of, you know, should you have stepped down or, you know, stepped aside, or whatever the case may be? Now, initially, when this happened, I think five counsel, I have to go back and read this because I had forgotten a lot of it. I think five counselors came out with a joint statement. And then Kim Scott did a separate statement. Mayor Chow made kind of a generic statement about domestic violence. Mayor Rourke, not Mayor, now Mayor Rourke. Then Counselor Rourke said, you know, something along the same lines, but he was in the court system, so he couldn't comment. And then there was Getcher saying, "This is executive session." And Rita, I don't think she put out a statement, but basically said something along the lines of, "Let the court system play out," or whatever. So now that you've through it, do you understand or can see the perspective of some of the counselors that asked you to step down or aside? I'm sure when it happened, it was a pretty open wound, and it probably hurt that no one returned your text message, and then they put out a statement without consulting with you. With time, do you look at it any differently?
No.
No?
For the simple fact, if I work with a colleague and something is happening in their life, it's first and foremost, I'm going to reach out to them and ask them, "What's going on with this?" At least that, so I can make a somewhat informed decision based on what they're allowed to share with me. I think a lot of that was caving into political pressure. I think the mob mentality of pitchforks and torches was out there. Some of the, and again, as an elected official, isn't your role to make informed decisions? You don't make decisions based on emotions. I think you should at least allow, especially something like this, where there is a legal process in place, innocent till proven guilty. I mean, but that all fell by the wayside. This, and then the whole rhetoric of, "It's going to be a distraction for me." If you look in the past year, all the things I still accomplished with the distraction, it seemed to be, was for my colleagues. My colleagues were distracted by the special interests and the political pressure that was in the air. And they had the hard time functioning. I didn't. I never lost focus of what the core of that responsibility was as an elected official. And that was the work for the residents of Lowell. I mean, I was following motion after motion regarding my district. Things such as went to operations, and they were tabling it, silencing pretty much concerns from my district as a result, because they were distracted by the political pressure that they had going on.
I never quite understood the distraction argument that I heard out there. That didn't make a lot of sense to me. What did make sense to me and what I struggled with, and I don't think I ever came to a conclusion in my own mind, was kind of the idea of, you know, you as a defendant, a criminal defendant, have every right in the world to let the process play out and to not speak and to take your attorney's advice. and to not speak and to take your attorney's advice, et cetera, right? I deeply believe in that. Where I started to struggle a little bit was, you know, as an elected official, you, wi, tho, those two things kind of butt heads a little bit, right? So, when you're being told that you can't speak and the public has, uh, an interest in hearing you, in hearing what you're saying today, right? They couldn't hear that for 13 months. I don't think that that's compatible with the, the, so, uh, the public gives you their consent to be governed. In, in exchange, we get transparency and we get to ask things that are of interest to our elected officials such as yourself. So, I see that as maybe something of a crisis of democracy.
But you're kind of blurring the two things now.
I'm trying to keep them separate, actually.
Transparency component
Yep.
that is owed to the voting public,
Yep.
which I fully
Right.
agree, the transparency is for the, the people's work, is for the public responsibility aspects of it. This was a, a private with somebody that was challenged with private things, and, and there was no, there was no infringement on the, the, the public transparency. There was none as far as that goes.
So, so, yeah, no, I don't mean to cut you off, but I did it anyways. Um, the, uh, I see, I see what you're saying. I think that I don't have the right to ask any question I want to, or I, I can ask. They don't have to answer about, you know, would you have the dinner last night or something like that? When it goes into the court system, when it's at Lowell District Court, it then is, uh, to a large extent, a, a, a public issue, right? And so, that's kind of where I, I, I struggled a little bit. Now, there's a flip side of that, and when I'm talking about democracy, which would be, had you stepped aside, now the residents of Senneville do not have their elected leader for who knows how long. And you mentioned basic operations, snowplowing, whether it's McPherson Park or, or who knows what it is, anything, pick, pick, pick one. Uh, now there's nobody doing that. That's also a crisis of democracy. It could also be weaponized against anyone if you could remove someone for something like that, so...
And if you look guilty, tha, that's kind of
Well, that's another aspect of it, yeah.
That's assuming, like, like, the role of guilty because of public outcry.
Right.
And, and I knew I was not guilty in this situation. Um, and, and it's funny because we saw a Congresswoman, since you brought it up.
Yeah.
We saw a Congresswoman say she read the police report and it was horrible, and, and I should step aside. But yet, at the same token, if it's a distraction and it's, we're talking about the public trust.
Sure.
She had allegations of campaign finance violations, which is clearly a violation, alleged violation of campaign finance law, which is public trust at the core. There was no outcry to step aside at that point.
Sure.
It, it, that got resolved in, in, in a quiet manner, and her and her family didn't have to answer to any of the public. And, and that is public funds. Th, we're talking at the core of a campaign, public donations. Th, th, there should be full transparency. That's why there's OCPF. So, i, it's just funny to see how, on one hand, it's not a problem for something to be alleged in a situation that is clearly within the realm of public trust and, and transparency. But, on the other hand, with my situation, this was more of a private matter that was working through the judicial system. And yet, there's a question of public trust and transparency about a domestic violence situation that everything about that should be private for the alleged victim. None of that was afforded to her or I, you see? So, it's a double-edged sword, and, and, and I'm okay with that, like...
Do you, do you have, have you put any thought into why you think that would be, uh, why you specifically?
Uh, I mean, it, what do you mean, me specifically?
So, basically, you mentioned that there's other instances of, of people get a, a, Congresswoman Trahan, for example. You know, the public didn't seem to be calling for blood in that situation, but they were, they were calling for blood in your city. Do you think it's just the nature of a domestic? Uh, do you think it's a man versus a woman type of thing? Is it something in the wake of Me Too? Or, do you think you're a rabble-rouser on the council floor, so let's get this guy out now? Like, what do you think?
I think it's a mix of a, a bunch of different factors. Um, we, we saw not too long ago, a member of the Boston Bruins. Allegedly, his, his, his wife or fiance, a girlfriend called the police. She was battered. They, they saw her battered. She said, her own mouth said, "He did this to her," explained it all. It was dropped within two weeks. I don't know why the cases are treated differently. I, I don't really care. But I think some of that, that, that mob mentality with the pitchforks and torches that you saw at the podium saying, "Step aside." I've seen some of those people unhappy with my policies on the unhoused. Other people have been critical about other policy that I've worked on. Some people might not even just like me as a person. They say I'm abrasive or whatever it is. I think there was some people that were genuinely compassionate about the domestic violence issue as a whole and, and didn't necessarily look at me as a person or my specific situation as much as that si, the, the entirety of domestic violence. And, and it was just, that's what they do. They advocate, rightfully so. I, I mean, I, I, I'm glad to see that there is advocacy out there for domestic violence. But I just think some of it was misguided. I think some people just followed in. Um, we had self-proclaimed community activists sending out emails to people without knowing anything about the case, saying, "I should step aside," recruiting young kids. And, and for some people, I think it was five minutes of exposure, that, that they would just show up and, and start, "He needs to step aside," knowing nothing about it. None of these people, eh, eh, you know, the disappointing part was, some of the people that, that I considered friends...
That's where I wanted to go next. You know, I want to talk about people, uh, I, I guess I'm talking in the abstract right now. Did you have people that were supporters that either came to you and said, "Corey, I, I, I can't, I can't support you anymore"? Or was it more a situation of they just didn't give you that courtesy and they just, you know, next thing you know, they're on Facebook blasting you or something like that?
So, so, I'll start with colleagues. I, I had people that were colleagues that, that, that I thought were friends. And, and thought, knew me better as a, my character, my personality, better than that, to at least give me the respect to call or find out, "Hey, what's going on with this?" You know, like, this is serious stuff. Wha, what is going on? And at least hear my take on it. None of that. It was easier to join, you know, the, the Me Too movement as far as, "Oh, step aside. He's a bully. Step aside." That, games, political games. Some of it, I think, was politically motivated, absolutely.
That's what I was getting at with my earlier question, is why you?
Absolutely. I, I mean, there's a lot of coincidences. I'm not saying that's why. But, I mean, even if you just look at around the time the Congresswoman came out with the comment in the Little Sun, our mayor at the time that called me and said, "I should step aside because of political pressure", his significant other started working for the Congresswoman's office around that time. I, i, it's just, there's a lot of things, and I don't care. I, i, realistically, I don't. I set it out the gate. These allegations are not true, and let the judicial process play out. This isn't gonna be a distraction from the work I've been doing and I intend to do for the district, for the, the citizens of Lowell. As far as supporters, I had a supporter reach out that, that was like, "Oh, what's going on?" Like, they, they're calling for you to step down, like, I'm kind of leaning that way. And took the time to at least talk to me about it. At the end of our conversation, they said, "You know what? You're right. Let the judicial process play out. And, and I, I know you. I don't see this happening, but, you know, I, I hope what you're telling me is the truth." And, and, and that's all. I, i, off we went. They called me since and said, "You know, I'm glad I, I gave you the, at least the courtesy to sit back and, and make an informed decision once the result was completed." And, and the Little Sun didn't help. Little Sun just, eh, twenty-something times copying, pasting the same, hit, chased, pulled hair, strangled, all the, the same stuff.
That's my writing style as well, so go easy. I did a lot of cut and paste with what I do. But, yeah, no, I mean, I, I think that, uh, when the statement came out from the alleged victim, I, I think a lot of that died down. Now, there's still been many Little Sun articles since then. Uh, but in terms of the, the court of public opinion or your colleagues or, or whatever, they stopped tabling motions. They stopped bundling motions. Everything else kind of stopped after that point.
Well, I think that kind of stopped around with, with this new mayor.
Yeah.
That, that's, I think, who put a stop to that, because under the previous mayor was when all of those shenanigans were going on. Under the new mayor, he, he didn't put up with that. Um, for the most part, he, he, no, he didn't allow that at all.
And speaking of the, the, the dynamic on the, on the council floor, just as a, on, on a personal level, um, what is it like to have to go into the council chambers? Those desks, they're probably closer than you and I are right now, and to have to sit right next to someone who's put out a press release saying that you should step down or aside, do you just block it out? Like, how, I've always wondered, do you, do you look at them? Do you say anything? Do you, like, what happens?
I mean, here's the thing, eh, um...
I mean, you're there to do a job. You gotta do it. You're elected to do a job.
I, is, is, you don't get the luxury of to choose who you're working with. The voting public chooses. I'll work with anybody. So, so, sitting next to somebody, it's not a big deal. It, it, it's no different than work in a union. You might not get along with everybody you, you're working in a trench with or doing something side by side, but at the end of the day, you're all looking for the same outcome. What happens along the way on, on personal levels, that, that's not really, that stuff rolls over my shoulders for the most part. That, eh, I don't take it personal. It's, it's, their motivations for doing what they did, tha, that's theirs. That, that's not mine. I know what I did, and, and I tried to just explain to them that, you know, all I'm asking for is to, before you make a, a rash decision, let this, get some more information.
And, and, and now that you've had a chance to sort of come in here and, and tell your side of it, what are you hoping, uh, how else to say it? What are you, what are you hoping to get out of something like today? Just to, to, to deliver the promise to tell your side? Are you hoping to change any hearts and minds? Like, what are you, what are you thinking?
I'm not looking to change anything, and I think there are some things that, that need to be looked at that, that were flushed out through all my ordeal. I think currently, we have, uh, an attorney that's operating in the city, the one that was on the phone that day, that was flushed out during my case, and he was supposedly one of the big witnesses here, Attorney Steve Barton. And, um, it, it's flushed out in the public transcripts how here was someone that was grooming this poor alleged victim since the age of 11. Eh, eh, and at the weakest point in their life, tried to take sexual advantage in different things. I mean, to the point where here's, here's an attorney-client relationship allegedly. At one point, he's testifying how he was looked at as a father figure role in, in this person's life.
And I, I don't know this attorney, so I'm an attorney, but I, I
I have it here.
I, I think I have to, 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 to step in and say, you know, he should be afforded the same courtesies that you were to defend himself and everything.
And he was in court.
Yeah, but he wasn't, he wasn't the subject, uh, he was a witness in court. He wasn't the subject of the
He is the subject though, because
Currently now?
If, if, if you looked at the transcripts,
Yep.
that was the ace for the district attorney supposedly, someone that heard a conversation on the phone. But yet, this is the same person that was providing alcohol to his client. The same person that was in court came out saying how, "Don't talk to me like that. Uh, why are you gonna turn on me like this?" When she released her statement. Also saying how, "You're talking to a man who hasn't had sex in 14 years with his wife." These were some of the components. Now, that's predatory. If, if, if there's gonna be advocates in, in groups looking at this, this poor woman that was the alleged victim in this situation, she needs the resources and they need to start looking at, not covering up the true predatory stuff that, that was occurring. And that's what I see, I see happen with my case as well. A lot of this was kind of swept under the rug because so-and-so's father was a judge in the courthouse, and this mistake was made by this department in the courthouse, and i, it's, all these mistakes happen, and there's nothing, but yet, an allegation comes and there's the torches and pitchforks. Eh, eh, it's, there is an imbalance in all of this, and, and that's what I think people need to really start to look at. The Little Sun was in the courtroom when a lot of this was exposed. Not one mention of it. But yet, they're quick to try to spin a story saying how it was dismissed because a witness didn't show up. The witness that was, they were waiting for, all they were gonna say, or they were supposed to say at the, um, based on what the DA was, was stating, was that, "They saw me at the scene. Never saw me put a finger on this person." It, it was, they, the Little Sun would write, like, "The DA's office was prepared to do this." They kept delaying, 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 13 months of delays because they were waiting for something to come out of the thin air and just say, "Oh, he did this." I mean, it's pretty bad when the alleged victim is telling the DA's office, "Listen, this has, this man did not touch me. These other people have done this to me. There's no resources provided for this poor, poor woman." And again, because some of these people involved are known to the courts, work within the courts, they, they're let off the hook for any of this kind of stuff. And I think that's something that the public needs to start looking at. Th, this is not a situation.
Well, anytime you prepare a defense, you're gonna uncover all kinds of stuff that, that supports your defense, basically, right? But I think I gotta tap dance away because this is a little bit beyond why, why I'm here today, right? So, I, I get you. I understand that had this gone forward, you would have had a lot of
Well, forward, we were at the trial.
Well, yeah, so, but if the trial had happened, right? So, if, if the trial went all the way through, you would have been able to present this to whoever the fact-finder, it was a bench trial, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, it would have gone before the judge and, you know, they could have done it. But I'm more interested in, in Corey Robinson versus whoever the, the, the witness was, right? So, now that this is over, like, have you taken any way life lessons or anything like that? Anything you would do, you already mentioned that you wouldn't have changed, you know, the nature of the, the relationship and trying to help her and everything like that. Has it changed how you approach your job, your, your fellow counselors? Lessons learned, anything like that as we sort of head towards a wrap-up of this?
Yeah, um, I would say the lessons learned, for one, is that sometimes it seems like, regardless of, of any personal relationships that are established, people will, will do the convenient thing or the thing that they feel like is easiest for them, so to say. It was easy for, for some people to say, "You know what? Step aside," without knowing anything, because they didn't have to face any external pressure. It was what the external pressure wanted. It's not the, that would have been the easy route for me to turn my back on someone that was in need because, you know, "Hey, that's your problem. I want nothing to do with it." I don't, I don't try to work for my community that way. Uh, that's why I work with my community. I listen to my community. I advocate for my community. Same thing with this kind of relationship. This person I cared about deeply, I listened to her, I understood her, her problems. I tried to advocate for resources to help her with her problems. I, it's no different. I, the easy way out to me is not something I've ever done my entire life. And so, if nothing else, when push comes to shove, people will show you the true colors, and, and you can't be upset about that. You just have to take it for what it is. You get to see people for who they really are in, in your hardest times, and tha, and that is true, I think. I think that's something people had told me, I've heard it many times. But until you go through something like that, you, you really do get to see who's who. And, and that's just the way life is, I think, in general. Um, one thing that was overlooked is, I, I feel bad, my family. Eh, like, all of this, they, they were dragged through this with me, and, and they stayed right there with me, and I, I'm super thankful. And again, I have plenty of, of, of my neighbors and, and residents, and there are some great people, Counselor Getcher, Counselor Mercia. Just them being willing to, to, to take a step back and allow the judicial process to play out, that, 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 I'll never forget that, because that takes real courage. That's true leadership. Innocent till proven guilty is, is, is a real thing. And, and far too often, it's guilty until proven innocent. Even with this situation, when it was dismissed, Little Sun couldn't wait to try to spin, "Oh, it's only dismissed because a witness didn't show up." If that's their take on it, so be it. But I think anyone that truly takes the time to get to know me, eh, eh, they would see that, that I'm, I'm an honest person. I, I don't lie. I don't condone any of this kind of stuff. And, and it was embarrassing to have to go and put my private life in the public spotlight, but it's something I signed up for. And, and, I mean, I look forward to now that it's passed, in, in the past, th, there's plenty of work to do. And, and right along, I've been plugging away. I think, um, if anything, this role and, and my responsibilities to the public wa, was a, a, a great help and asset because it allowed me to focus on positive things and, and kind of keep my mind off of all the negative criticism and, and all the crazy spins that were out there. I knew deep down inside that I was innocent of this. It was a matter of going through the 13 months, and, and that, that was a grueling 13 months because, again, the worst part of it is having people say all these things and make all these conclusions and without the ability to defend yourself. I mean, that's, i, in, anyone that knows me knows, like, I have a hard time not defending myself on stuff. But this one was, was probably one of the most challenging situations I've ever found myself in. And, and I'm so thankful that I was still able to plug away, as I committed to, and work for the, the residents of Senneville and the entire city, and, and see some of the positives that, that we were able to create. As a result, because that's kind of like small victories along the way, even shouldering the burden of all this public stuff. Eh, eh, I was never distracted one time from, from the work that I vowed to do.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in. Um, hopefully you felt like you had a chance to, to give your side of it today. Uh, I'll be watching, uh, the council, hopefully coming up with my own crazy spins on the, on, on the blog. And, uh, but, uh, no, seriously, thank you very much, Corey. Looking forward to, uh, watching the rest of the term.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all for tuning in. Uh, again, Ryan Gilde coming to you from the WellPoint Studios. Have a good one.